Good evening. If everyone could take their seats, we're going to get started. Welcome to the Henry County Board of Commissioners, 6:30 Tuesday, July 15, 2025, regular scheduled board meeting. We're going to begin with our invocation from Pastor Leonard Hines, and he is going to also lead us in the pledge of allegiance. If everyone would please stand.
Good evening. Our Father, we, as we come together tonight for the business of government, we implore, Lord, and ask that you would meet with us and lead, that people and principle would be put above self, and, Lord, that you would just work in this meeting and the agenda, and, Lord, everything that may transpire, and, Lord, we realize growth is necessary, but we also know that with that will come pain. And I pray that you would help with that, lead everyone in this meeting tonight, and we'll thank you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. We do have an announcement. The following planning and zoning item was advertised for the July 15, 2025 BLC meeting has been tabled by the applicant. That is RZ-24-15 has been removed from the agenda. If it's anyone that is here for that particular item, it will not be heard tonight. We have a proclamation that we're doing. We're going to move that. We're waiting for Mr. Street to get here, so we're going to move that a little bit down the agenda. Next item is appointment for Board of Health, Ms. Pamela Delaney Delancey to fill an unexpired term, 7/15/25 through 1/1/28. And this is for the Henry County Board of Health. Is Ms. Pam here? Okay. I'd like to call for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. County Attorney, no, County Manager. Sorry about that, Rachel. County Manager Sherri Matthews, please come forward and read our consent agenda.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Board, and Pillars of the Community. This is your consent agenda for Tuesday, July 15 at 6:30 PM. Under the County Attorney, we have a resolution, and it is a home rule, I apologize, we have an ordinance, a home rule ordinance by the Henry County Board of Commissioners under the Home Rule provisions for Counties of the Constitution of the State of Georgia to amend an act of the General Assembly of 2006 found in Georgia, L. 2006, page 4062, as amended, creating the Henry County Board of Elections and voter registration to provide an effective date and for other related purposes. Under Facility Maintenance, we have a resolution awarding a contract to Roof Connect National Roofing Services, Omni Partners Contract Number R230403, in the amount of $266,364.59 for the replacement of a new membrane roofing at Fire Station Number 4 utilizing capital improvement plan funding. This is located in District 1. Under the Police Department, we have a resolution accepting an allocation in the amount of $2,000 from the United States Secret Service Atlanta Field Office for the Henry County Police Department's participation in the Cyber Fraud Task Force Digital Evidence Forensics Lab. Under Senior Services, we have a resolution approving an aging subgrant contract with the Atlanta Regional Commission for fiscal year 2026 in the amount of $1,072,799.15 with a local match of $73,393.56, totaling $1,146,192.71. Under SPOS, we have a resolution to terminate the contract of Ride Grading, Inc., awarded per Resolution Number 24-229 for the construction of Night Drive from State Route 155 to Crumley Road. And under Technology Services, we have a resolution approving a contract with Tyler Technologies for standardization of time clocks and scheduling in the amount of $226,646 for initial costs and a yearly maintenance cost of $25,200 utilizing funding from Technology Services repairs and maintenance account. We also have a resolution approving the purchase of technology hardware in the amount of $221,019.90 from Georgia State Contract Number 99999-SPD-SPD0000219-002, utilizing capital improvement plan funds. Madam Chair, this ends the consent agenda.
Are there any questions regarding the consent agenda? Any questions? If not, can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move to our regular agenda, County Manager, from the County Manager's Office. Who's doing this? Ashley. Okay. And where are our school resource people? There they are.
They knew they couldn't get away without coming up to say hi. So, good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners, and Pillars of the Community. Before you is a resolution to approve an updated memorandum of understanding regarding the School Resource Officer Program with the Henry County Board of Education. I'm going to hit a couple highlights really fast, and then if you have any specific questions, I obviously brought some friends to help me out. So, just starting very high level, wanted to kind of give you guys a snapshot of where we are. The current staffing that's been approved for the School Resource Officer Program has 38 SRO-specific personnel, 45 crossing guards, and one admin. Out of that, we have 13 openings for School Resource Officers specifically, and 10 crossing guards. So, I also just wanted to start and say thank you for everybody that helped get us to this point. I know the County Attorney's been involved, Public Safety, Chief Ireland, Major Maddox. It's been a collaborative effort with the Board of Education to get to an agreement that everyone's happy with. We first signed this agreement in 2022. There aren't a lot of significant changes other than the ones that are noted on the screen. So, the most notable changes for this is an updated communications pathway. So, essentially, we've been able to get to a compromise where we have improved resources to be able to collaboratively discuss potential disputes or ongoing issues with these school administrations specifically. So, I know that everyone kind of generally understands that there's the Board of Education. Each school has its own administration, so it's a lot of different layers that we're having to work between. So, this just lays it out a little bit more specifically and has a back-and-forwards communication process, so that way everyone can be heard when there's an issue. Additionally, there are very specific individuals who are going to be allowed access to critical information. This is mostly going to be for after-hours threat response, is very, very limited, but it's also very much needed. It's going to help decrease response time in the event that PD is made aware of any potential issues. And then the final piece is that with this agreement, there would be a transition plan presented within 12 months. So, it's not saying that we're going to have a transition within 12 months, but within that next year from whenever we sign this agreement, we'll have some sort of plan of what that's going to look like moving forward to be able to have the schools take over this program long-term. And with that, I will take any questions.
Any questions from the board? Okay. Okay, no, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Ashley, for that. I do have a question. So, stating that there will be a transition at some point, so our officers that are currently SROs, when that transition takes place, where will our officers go?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners. It's a question at hand, so what would happen is, at the time, the SRO program, at the end of the two first years, that 12-month transition for the third year technically, once they make the transition, our officers that do not transition over to the school police, they, some of them may go over there, some of them may stay here. The ones that stay here, we will get with Chief Ireland, or Deputy Chief Smith, are those that are in charge, and what they would probably do is be absorbed into positions that are open inside of the department now. So, we would man them at current staffing needs.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, yes.
So, my question is, two years ago, when the agreement was sent to us under their previous administration, there was going to be a transition take place at that time, and we were going to be on kind of a short-term deal with the school. Well, obviously, that didn't happen, and we're here again signing a new agreement, and we have a transition place you mentioned in 12 months. My question is, how can we hold their feet to the fire to make sure that that plan is going to be implemented, or we see a plan that's going to be created within that 12 months?
So, I will, as you noted, it was an administration change. I think that this agreement and the way that it's structured is going to help us with that. The previous agreement talked about one-year renewals, and I know that it was a general understanding of this was going to be an agreement year by year for three years. Having the specific language included of you will have a plan to us for what that transition will look like within 12 months, I think is going to be our key, our key point. So, if we hit that 12-year mark, 12-month mark, and we don't have a plan, that gives us that leverage to go back to them and say, okay, even if this isn't going to happen in the next three months, six months, a year, we need something to understand what that's going to look like for our long-term planning for the Police Department.
Correct. Yeah, this biggest concern I had is planning for Chief Ireland and his staff. What does that look like? Whether the plan says, hey, in 12 months, we create a plan, but see even two or three years down the line, that's okay, we just need to be able to plan on our end. Okay?
That's exactly what that language was intended to try and alleviate.
All right. So, I'd like to call for a motion to approve the, this memorandum of understanding between the Board of Education and Henry County School Resource.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. No further discussion. All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Department of Transportation.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Board of Commissioners. We're excited today to start reviewing the identified essential equipment needs with our Department of Transportation. This is going to focus on our critical infrastructure response and repair efforts. This is a list of the pieces of equipment that have already been presented to both this board and the Building and Facility Authority, which was prior approved. We are asking to move forward with this to ensure that our DOT response has the equipment needed to break off into separate district responses so that we can address roadway issues faster. I'm going to pass it to Director Morris now to give a breakdown of those equipment.
Thank you, Deputy. Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board of Commissioners, and Pillars of the Community. Thank you for leading the year this evening, and before you, we have four resolutions to like to present. The first one being a resolution approving the purchase of four John Deere 6120 E-Cab tractors and four Bush Hog 4410 attachment from Agpro from Henry County DOT in the amount of $486,374.18 through Georgia Contract, Morris Contract Number 99999001SPD0000177-0026, using capital improvement plan funds. Are there any questions?
No. Any questions from the board? Okay. No.
Chair, would you like to do all the DOTs and approve all at the end?
Yeah.
Each resolution. Okay. Next resolution, it's approving the purchase of two Kenworth T-880 Dunk Trucks from MHC Kenworth, South Atlanta for Henry County DOT in the amount of $460,425 through Source Square Contract Number 032824-KTC, using capital improvement plan funds. Next is a resolution approving the purchase of one Vermeer Wood Chipper for Southeastern Sales and Service for Henry County DOT in the amount of $149,556.14 through Source Square Contract Number 031721-VRM, using capital improvement plan funds. And finally, we have a resolution approving the purchase of two 275XEHC Compact Trackloaders from Yancey for Henry County DOT in the amount of $260,968 through Source Square Contract Number 011723-CAT, using capital improvement plan funds. Are there any questions?
Yes. Can you just tell us a little bit about, you know, how this will help the Department, Department of Transportation?
I'm sorry, this noise is background.
Okay.
How's it going to help the department?
Yeah. Tell us, tell us how this benefits and helps the department.
Response time, that's the, that's the main thing. Every day, we get work orders, not just through our C-clip fits, through emails, through text messages, through smoke signals. We get a lot of things coming our way, and one of the things that I'm doing over the DOT is realigning our resources. We're putting people in the right places where they need to be. We bring in the talent that we need to have to run it, and we are separating our people by district. We're putting people in the district so that we won't have to bring a tractor from down here next to the mall up to Flakes Mill Road, because that takes two hours. The staging process takes so long, and we lose so much time and lose so much money and time and revenue from human capital, what have you. So, by aligning our people in the district so they have a faster response time, we can save money, operating costs, and also make our constituents a lot happier.
Okay. Thank you so much. It's just, you know, this, I just want our constituents to understand what we're doing and the resources that are needed to be able to accomplish what we need to get done. So, thank you so much. Anyone have any comments?
So, we're, we're bound to replace some water equipment, that's correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay.
Two additional. When you say Flakes Mill, so it's more so north and south, we'll have access, so you...
No, ma'am, that was just an example. When we're down in Locust Grove, we have to load a tractor and take it up to Flakes Mill Road, that's six hours. From the time we get the tractor trailer down, the drivers, the whole nine, it's kill the day. So, what we're looking to do is have equipment stationed, physically sitting in those area, so we can take the people to the equipment to take care of the problem.
Okay. Thank you. I like that.
There will be a team and a set of equipment assigned to each district.
Okay. He's going to hold you to the fire there, Mr. Morris.
Do you do?
Yeah, I did. First of all, thank you for doing this. This is something that I've been advocating for, for a while, and when we started talking about priorities for each district, DOT and making sure that you were properly resourced was one of my biggest priorities. So, I'm very much in favor of the plan that you are trying to implement. I think it would be great for our citizens, and I think it's going to improve the service level that we provide to our citizens. So, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. And I would just like to say, as a former DOT employee, 12 years, I understand the importance of having the proper equipment as well as the proper staff to be able to handle the maintenance of our districts. I know there are a lot of our residents that are riding and seeing our overgrown shoulders, and I've been explaining to some of the residents that it's really, you know, some of our staffing issues as well, because we do need qualified personnel that can operate the equipment to keep our districts maintained, and so if you are qualified, we need some help. Amen. Thank you.
With, with that said, I'd like to call for a motion to approve all of the items A, B, C, and D.
We can approve all of them?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I move to approve.
Second.
Okay. So, got a motion and a second to approve all the items on the transportation, A, B, C, and D that was read into the record. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is Fleet Services.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair.
Commissioners, Pillars of the Community, the resolution before you for Fleet Services is approving the purchase of one Hunter Engineering Alignment Rack from Mohawk Lift for Henry County Fleet Services in the amount of $166,359.54 through Source Well Contract 121229223 MRL, using capital improvement plan funds. Any questions?
Okay. So, do you want to explain what a Hunter Engineering Alignment Rack is?
It's a four-post lift that will lift anything from a pickup truck to a tandem-wheel dump truck, even a fire engine if we have to. It'll be used to lift them up, to work on them, to do outsourcing on the lights, and the main purpose is to do front-end alignments, which we can't do at Fleet. We want to quit outsourcing that and do it in-house. Also, the new, all the new equipment's got lane assist, proximities and all that. We can, if something gets bumped around, we can line all that back up with this lift and not have to take it back to the dealership and save a lot of time and money.
Okay. That's good, saving money.
We estimate conservatively three-year payback on this if we use it in-house and don't keep sending stuff out.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you so much. Okay. Any questions from the board here and, okay, yes.
In the future, would it be possible or feasible if we would be able to offer our services to other jurisdictions in those types of services, like government agencies that may need to get their vehicles in quick and don't have time to take it to like a regular dealership to have it done? Would it be a source of revenue for us?
We'd have to be, when you go into that realm, you have to be certified through the dealerships, like Blue Oval, through Ford, GM, you have to be certified through them. We're not at that stage with our staff yet, but we could go there, and we could get payback from the dealerships to do that type of service. Some of the other counties are doing that now.
Awesome. No other questions or comments? Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is SPOS.
There was a picture of one.
Come on, Creep. Out there playing basketball with them children. Got to sell her.
Thank you for the extra time getting up here with my boot on. Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board of Commissioners, and Pillars of the Community. Today, I have before you a resolution approving the purchase and installation of a concession restroom facility at Cochrane Park from CXT Incorporated in an amount of $290,457.87 using SPOS 6 funds. SPOS 6 was approved by voters in November 2024, and we started collecting those funds, and so we are definitely using them based off of what everyone voted for, is to improve these parks. This is the facility, it'd be on Source Well Contract Number 081721-CXT. That's the, and this is what, similar to what the facility would look like out there at Cochrane Park.
Awesome. Can we do the same thing in this here, or do we just need to do each one individual?
Madam Chair, for the record, it would be cleaner if we...
Okay, okay, all right, great. So, this is District 2. Commissioner Robinson, any comments?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, JP. I really appreciate this. As you know, this is Phase 2 that we're doing with Cochrane Park after renovating, bringing the kids back to their park, and the work that you put into this, I greatly appreciate it, because we're looking forward to the future with our kids, and we're doing different designs versus the standard look, so I definitely appreciate. I know it's not going to look like this, but it's going to look better, and you and I had that conversation. So, definitely thank you for actually putting the work in to make it better, so I appreciate you.
We're going to add a big H on the side of, on the side of it.
Yes, ma'am. I move to approve this item, please.
Got a motion. Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item.
The next item is a resolution approving the purchase and installation of a concession restroom facility at Warren Holder Park, District 1, from CXT Incorporated in an amount of $323,557.38 using SPOS 6 funds. Again, SPOS 6 was approved in November 2024, and we're utilizing these funds to upgrade the parks. Source World Contract Number 081721-CXT. Here is another sample of what the concession could look like, and this will be replacing the concession on the baseball side of Warren Holder Park.
Commissioner Wilson, this is in your district.
Yes. Thank you, JP. We, we've been talking about this for a little bit, but thanks for the voters in SPOS 6 that we have the funds to do it with. So, when we take down the old building, we're going to tear up the old slab, or we're going to use that, we're going to pour a brand-new slab in it.
Brand-new slab.
Okay, perfect. That's all I have. With that being said, I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item, Lynn.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, and Pillars of the Community. Before you is a resolution approving a budget amendment and awarding RFP 25-72 for the construction of a satellite tag office in Locust Grove to MEJA Construction of Peachtree City in the amount of $5,498,675. Purchasing department solicited the proposals. We received seven proposals. They were reviewed and rated by the review committee, and MEJA Construction did receive the highest rate. We requested a best and final offer from MEJA, and they submitted that, again, in the amount of $5,498.675. Funding for the budget amendment in the amount of $500,000 is available through the SPOS 6 project account, SP6012. This is the scores for each of the seven proposers. This is MEJA's best and final offer, and this is a rendering of what the new tag office will look like in Locust Grove. It'll be located just to the right of the existing Driver Services office there on Tanger Boulevard, I believe it's on that, that road there. I want to say it's a longer name, but on Tanger.
Awesome. Is Tax Commissioner here? Is Tax Commissioner here?
Yes, ma'am.
Where is he at? I know this should be something that will make, make it a lot more convenient for those residents that live on the South Side.
Yeah, we're really thrilled and really appreciative of everything that this board has done to move this forward, to put it on the SPOLOST list. We've been looking to really serve our, the southern portion of our county for quite some time and really get a firm footprint out in that area. We have our Stockbridge Branches really kind of handles a lot of the northern portion of the county. Obviously, our McDonough Branch here in the central area. So we've had, all the growth that we've seen in the southern part of our county, we think this location, this brick-and-mortar location will really help to solidify our presence and really serve the remainder of the county, you know, for years and decades to come. It's been long in the works. I remember talking to Andy Pippin some years back. He said he had brought the idea, and certainly David Curry, our predecessor, had also tried to push forward this. So again, just can't thank this board, administration, Ms. Matthews, and everybody that's been a part of this to get it to this point. Lynn and her team has been phenomenal as well, kind of getting us through the bid process as well. So really excited about it.
Absolutely. You all have some kiosks that you put up too recently, right?
We do. We now, when I came in, we had two kiosks. We now have four. And of those four, three of them have the ability to also renew your driver's license. The latest one we did, we have our first one in a Publix location, the new Publix over in Ola. We just opened that up about a month ago, so we're excited about having that in place. So we are, and we're seeing a lot, a great deal more online transactions, which certainly helps to kind of help reduce some of that footprint. One of the things I'm really excited about with this location is it proposes three drive-through lanes. We're seeing that, it's obviously more of the move, people want to, want to, that air of convenience. We have one drive-through in Stockbridge. We've been working with them to possibly look into expanding that footprint to expand more, but we think three will certainly help. We saw during the COVID years how beneficial it was to have that drive-through, we're able to maintain and continue our services. So again, we're just looking at this to, again, increase our footprint and continue to expand our convenience to our, to the residents.
Absolutely. Well, with that said, any comments from any, okay, Commissioner, okay, Wilson?
Thank you. I echo all the comments you said, because we've been working on this for a minute. This is going to be built on county property, so that was a, that's a big savings as well. Do we have any idea what the construction time's going to be when?
Thirteen months is what was provided by the proposer.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you for your patience. It's been a while. I'm glad to be a part of the board that made this happen. I know it's been, like you said, it's been in the making for quite a while. So with that.
Okay, you got a comment?
Thank you for the presentation. Congratulations to the Tax Commissioner, but I just wanted to say thank you for showing the scoring. I love that we are being transparent about
Absolutely.
how we bid contracts and how we award contracts. So I just want to say thank you for showing the scoring. I appreciate that.
Commissioner Price?
And I too would like to thank you all for the hard work. And just to remind the citizens that the county is really working, I remember several years ago, I was walking one of my dogs, and they were actually looking at the property at that time. And so government works slow, but the county is always thinking about, the government is always thinking about its residents and citizens, just trying to make it better for them. And the way Locust Grove is growing, this Locust Grove Tag Office is a much-needed facility because they are growing by leaps and bounds. So again, thank you for all of the hard work that you all have done for this.
And thank the citizens for supporting SPOLOST. That's what made this possible.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Madam Chair, we'd like to add, we have had conversations with the city of Locust Grove, asking them to, for a commitment to assist with some of the FFNE costs from this project. So I had a meeting with the city manager as well as the mayor. They are looking, they're going back to look at their SPOLOST expenditures and SPOLOST accounts to see what level of commitment they can make. So we're encouraged that they'll be able to be a, more of an active partner in this project as well. So again, again, Johnny, Commissioner Wilson, really appreciate all the pushing and help that, to help bring this to fruition as well.
Commissioner Wilson, you want to make?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Thank you.
Absolutely. Next item, road widening. Clayton Carr.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, and pillars of the Henry County community. Tonight, the SPOLOST department has three items related to some of our road widening projects for the board's consideration. All three of these items will be to consider awarding a design contract. The first item on the agenda is for a design contract for East Lake Road Widening located in District 3. The county solicited proposals through a request for qualifications and received nine proposals for this contract. Those proposals were reviewed by a committee of county staff, and subsequently, Croy Engineering had the highest-scoring proposal. They provided a cost proposal for the design in the amount shown, $2,125,050. Funding is available in the SPOLOST 6 District 3 project account. And here is a map showing the area and the project. The East Lake Road Widening is between Highway 155 and Airline Road. Presently, East Lake Parkway is a four-lane road that, as you get to Highway 155, the four lanes drops to two. This project would look to extend that further to the east to have four lanes going past the Union Grove School Cluster and ultimately ending at Airline Road in Union Grove. Be happy to take any questions?
I do have one question. From Airline Road to the roundabout, is there any future look to expand to that point?
Yes, ma'am. So under the SPOLOST 5 program, previously, the county actually prepared a, working with Croy Engineering, a concept, what that may look like to widen all the way to State Route 20. Under the SPOLOST 6 program for preliminary engineering, the SPOLOST department segmented it into Highway 155 to Airline Road first.
Okay, all right, great. So there is future to go. Okay, awesome. Any other questions from the board? I know Deidre's is in your district.
Motion for approval.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Thank you, board. The second item tonight for SPOLOST Roadways is a design contract for the widening of Patrick Henry Parkway located in the Eagles Landing area of District 4. This widening project would be from Eagles Landing Parkway to Jodyco Road. The county solicited proposals through a request for qualifications, or RFQ, and received five proposals on this project. Those proposals were reviewed by a committee of county staff and subsequently, American Engineering Incorporated, doing business as STV Services, had the highest-ranking proposal. They submitted a cost proposal for this project in the amount of $2,237,000. Funding is available in the SPOLOST 6 District 4 account as well as through an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Stockbridge. This will be a joint project with the city of Stockbridge. And lastly, here's a map showing Patrick Henry Parkway is, it runs parallel to Interstate 75 between Eagles Landing Parkway and Jodyco Road. And I'll be happy to take any questions.
Commissioner Price?
I have no questions. Excuse me, I'm a little cold. But I just want to thank the SPOLOST department again for the hard work. We often say that as citizens are traveling throughout Henry County, that they do not or are not concerned about what city and what county. And so I'm just glad to be able to work collaboratively with the city of Stockbridge to show that we are truly one Henry. And so this is a much-needed widening project. Again, it runs parallel to 75. We have the Western Parallel Connector that's in, under construction now, and so this will run in conjunction with that on the east side of 75. And so we're just excited again to be able to make these road improvements, not only just for District 4, but for Henry County as a whole. So thank you. With that, I'd like to make a motion that we will approve the resolution awarding for this bid design for Patrick Henry.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you, board. And the third and last item tonight for SPOLOST Roadways is, it's actually two projects in one contract. Both projects are within the same project limits. This will be for the widening, design services for the widening of McDonough Parkway as well as an intersection improvement, McDonough Parkway at Bridges Road. The widening project is from Jonesboro Road to State Route 20. The county solicited proposals through an RFQ, request for qualifications for this project, and received five proposals. Following staff's review of those proposals, Croy Engineering had the highest-ranking proposal. They submitted a cost proposal for this in the amount of $2,569,810. Funding is available within the SPOLOST 6 District 5 project accounts. It's, as I mentioned, two projects under SPOLOST 6. And this is also a joint project with the city of McDonough through our SPOLOST 6 intergovernmental agreement. Lastly, I'll show the map of this project. McDonough Parkway right now is two lanes within this corridor, and there in the center is the intersection with Bridges Road. What this contract will allow the county to do is design the intersection improvement in a manner that will allow us to proceed forward under SPOLOST 6 to improve the intersection, but it'll be cohesive in the future when we come back in a future program to four-lane McDonough Parkway. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Commissioner Lewis?
No questions. But once again, just thank you for your work. And I kind of want to piggyback on what Commissioner Price stated as far as being collaborative with our city partners. So this is a joint project with the city of McDonough, so I just want to say thank you to the city of McDonough. They've been doing a lot of great work. Just very happy to partner with them in a project that will benefit all of the citizens of Henry County. And also, I want to make one additional comment before I move to approve. If you'll notice, there has been an improvement in every single district in the county and also a county-wide improvement, which is the tag office, which will serve the citizens of Locust Grove. SPOLOST is working for every single resident in Henry County, whether they are an unincorporated or a resident of the city. So I just want to say, once again, thank you to all of the voters who voted for SPOLOST. You are voting for yourself. We appreciate it, and we are proud to approve these projects. So with that, I want to make a motion to approve.
A motion? Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Clayton.
Thank you, board.
So before we go to the planning and zoning item, we're going to go back to the top of the agenda to do the proclamation. And if I could have Amber to please come forward to present the proclamation.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners and Pillars of the Community. It is a privilege to present to the public today a proclamation recognizing DJ Greg Street for 30 years of excellence in broadcasting and community service. Whereas the Henry County Board of Commissioners proudly recognizes individuals who exemplify leadership, creativity, and dedication to uplifting their communities, Greg Street, a legendary radio DJ and media personality, has been the unmistakable voice of Atlanta's airwaves for three decades, best known for his iconic show on V103 and his signature line, "It's six o'clock, time for Greg Street to rock." A phrase that has become a cultural staple for generations of listeners. Whereas Greg Street has demonstrated exceptional talent in recognizing and breaking new artists, playing a pivotal role in launching the careers of musicians including Usher, T.I., Lil Jon, OutKast, Ludacris, and the Ying Yang Twins, just to name a few, thereby contributing significantly to Atlanta's reputation as a global music hub. And whereas beyond his contributions to music, Greg Street is the founder of the We Need to Read Foundation, a literacy initiative launched in 2006 that promotes reading among youth through school visits, scholarships, and incentives. In partnership with the Henry County Water Authority and the Henry County Sheriff's Office, the foundation awards annual reading prizes of $103 to the top boy and girl readers in each grade level at five Henry County schools. Greg Street has also played an active role in milestone kickoff festivals, motivating students to perform their best on standardized tests. In recognition of these efforts and his impact on education and community service, he was recently honored with the Rotary Vocational Award. And whereas his philanthropic efforts include hosting the annual $5,000 King of the Bass Fish Tournament at the Tusa Hall Reservoir to benefit his foundation-supporting Henry County students, a longstanding partnership with the Henry County Water Authority for Kids Fishing Day at the Cuba Hacha Outdoor Education Center, and organizing the We Need to Read Foundation Christmas bonus, an eight-hour read-a-thon at Cochrane Public Library, awarding $3,000 in prizes to promote literacy. And whereas Greg Street's commitment to community also includes the South Metro Golf Women Mean Business Foundation Putting Golf Tour at Eagles Landing Country Club, benefiting youth scholarships and his foundation's continued support of organizations throughout Henry County that give back to local youth through education, recreation, and empowerment programs. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Henry County Board of Commissioners, on behalf of Chair Carlotta Harrell, Vice Chair Neet Robinson, and Commissioners Johnny Wilson, Dee Anglin III, Kevin Lewis, and Michael Price, does hereby recognize and commend Greg Street for his extraordinary contributions to music, education, and youth development, and for using his platform to create a lasting positive impact throughout Henry County and beyond this 15th day of July. Thank you.
Mr. Street, could you come forward and all of the kids? Okay. Would you like to say anything?
Just thank you to the citizens and the people, wonderful people here in Henry County, Georgia.
All right, okay. That's the shortest you have.
Want to come up and represent, that's representing? Kids, come on.
Okay, next item, planning and zoning, RZ-24-28. This is a public hearing.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board members and pillars of the
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board members and pillars of the Henry County community. The item before you is a rezoning request from Next Metro Development LLC and HFG Development LLC. The property in question is approximately 35.97 acres, located north of Foster Drive within Landlots 81 and 112 of the 6th District. The request is to rezone the property from RA Residential Agricultural to RM Multifamily Residential to allow for the development of a horizontal multifamily community. The subject property has a future land use designation of urban residential, which supports between four and 12 dwelling units per acre net. On the overhead, there is the property hashed in green directly on Foster Drive. Here is a zoning map of the property showing the RA, and it's directly across from RM property, as well as mixed-use and commercial properties as well. And this is the future land use map showing the future land use designation of urban residential. This is the site plan that was submitted by the applicant when they first made their application. And here is the updated site plan after numerous changes and feedback from staff. The revised conceptual site plan reflects a gated, fore-rent, horizontal multifamily neighborhood with a total of 254 units broken down as follows: 76 one-bedroom attached units, 103 two-bedroom detached units, and 75 three-bedroom detached units. This yields a gross density of 7.1 units per acre and a net density of 9.2 units per acre. And the plan includes ample open space with approximately 1.95 acres of interior green space and additional 19.1 acres of open space throughout the site. The community is proposed to be gated with a Knox Box access and includes internal privacy fencing for all backyards, and units will include a mix of attached and detached garages. Here are some departmental comments from our different development departments and public safety, as well as the school board, and the site plan. Here are architectural elevations and renderings submitted by the applicant. Planning and zoning staff has recommended that the final elevation approval be handled administratively, but must remain substantially consistent with the renderings as shown, including brick water tables on all units and accessory buildings. Unit sizes will range as follows: One-bedroom units should be 690 square feet; two-bedroom units will be 980 square feet, and these are minimums; and three-bedroom units will be 1,265 square feet. The community includes a robust amenity package designed to foster walkability and community gathering. Proposed amenities include resort-style pool with cabana and restrooms, pavilion areas with outdoor kitchens, fire pits and grills, two-enclosed dog parks, pickleball courts, passive green space, and pocket parks with sidewalk connectivity, central green space near the leasing office, and a covered landscape mailbox kiosk designed to match the community's architecture. Due to the number of units and projected trips, a traffic impact study will be required prior to permitting. Based on the potential traffic volumes and distribution, a left-turn lane along Foster Drive may be required, along with utility relocation of right-of-way acquisition. Although Foster Drive is not currently on an active SPOLOX project list, the Henry County SPOLOX Department has identified it as a potential project for SPOLOX 7. As such, staff has included a zoning condition requiring up to 15 feet of additional right-of-way dedication along Foster Drive before issuance of any land disturbance permits. Additionally, the entrance from Kendra Drive will be restricted to emergency access only and constructed to meet Henry County Fire Department standards. Staff does recommend approval of the rezoning request from RA to RM with 15 conditions that address consistency with the site plan and unit count, traffic study, road improvements, elevation review, quality design standards, landscaping, and enhanced buffers, amenity construction, gated access, and fire department compliance. All residential and amenity structures must conform to the architectural character presented tonight, and the revised conditions include clarified square footage requirements and condition number 10, and strengthening the landscape buffer language and condition number 12. And these are pictures of what the landscape buffer will look like once they finish construction. I'll be happy to take any questions at the appropriate time.
This is a public hearing. Persons wishing to come to speak in favor of the request will have a collective toll of 10 minutes to address the board. Is there anyone here to speak in favor?
Sit down, down button. That's how you move forward.
Madam Chairwoman and Commissioners, Greg Hecht, 205 Corporate Center Drive, Stockbridge, Georgia, 30281. Great to be with you. Appreciate your hard work and leadership. Appreciated the opportunity to meet with District Commissioner Price and Chairwoman Harrell on this project, and so happy to be able to present it to you. As you know, we are here with Next Metro Development LLC and HFG Development LLC. We would reserve two minutes for rebuttal if we could. We would tell you that we are here with Sean Rust, who is one of the vice presidents of Next Metro and HFG Development, and Sean will help me through one of the video presentations. Also, we have our engineering group with John Palmer and Falcon Design Group, who's in the back, who helped engineer this project. We would note to you that Next Metro is the parent company of Avila Homes, which develops and operates private upscale, single-family cottage communities with first-class amenities and concierge living. And as you can see, I think it is a traditionally nice, beautiful cottage home community with an opportunity for something new and vibrant in Henry County. We would note also, as you were shown by Kamau, the director, that this is the project exactly what the future land use map requests and the comprehensive plan requests and the central district character area requests. In fact, the present zoning is noncompliant with all three of those documents. Basically, the future land use map, the comp plan, and the central district area all call for a multifamily project-like vertical apartments, but this is the opposite of this. This is horizontal cottage homes with beautiful amenities and less units than what would ultimately be required in a maximum-phasing light vertical apartments. This is not that. We would show you next that you will show that the majority of the residents in this particular community are professional millennials, midlife singles, dual-income couples, and empty nesters with an average household income of about $132,000 or more. Nationally, Avila residents show that approximately 60% of the community residents are 35-plus, and only 20% of the households have children. If I could play the video now, if that can come on, Kamau? Okay. Can we hold time for a second while I get this? Can we stop time for a second?
Stop, can you stop the time, Jasmine?
Sean Rust will help.
And I'm going to move quick because the video goes quick, but this is a video shows an Avila community in Dallas, showing our key features such as the resort-style pool, grill pavilion, and game area. All our homes are designed to have walkability to the community amenity throughout the community. Our elevations will feature a brick water table on all four sides. The idea is to have an upscale country aesthetic in Henry County. All our homes also have four windows, or windows on four sides, 10-foot ceilings, luxury finishes throughout, and a private backyard, fenced-in backyard, which is maintained by our property management company. An additional key feature is the green space, as you see here. We have pocket parks throughout our design at Foster Drive, as well as a main green space for the community. Additionally, a secondary amenity similar to what is shown here with the grill pavilion, as well as a sporting area for people to congregate as well.
So as Sean, as Vice President Rust of the company was telling you, there is a massive amount of green space here, massive pool and amenities, 19.1 outer exterior green space, nearly two acres of interior green space. And the location of it, as you know, it's approximately 36 acres at Foster Drive, Foster Road and Kendra Drive. We would note that Kendra Drive is not utilizable by the residents. It's only for emergency purposes with a Knox Box allowance. The zoning for this right now, that the staff has recommended, and I will note that ZAB recommended, both staff and ZAB recommend this, is that we are less, while this would allow for up to 12 units per dwelling unit, 12 dwelling units per acre, we're less. We are much less than what a vertical apartments would be, and as we stated, this is exactly what the future land use map would look like, which another developer might try, is vertical apartments. This is not what we want. We want a cottage-style home community, which is exactly what we're trying to get in this particular area. We would also talk to you about the fact that the central district area itself and the flume is out of compliance with the present RA zoning designation. It actually has to move to this designation to be in compliance. If you see with the central district area, the land use itself calls for urban residential, which is what we're going to. If you look at the red line over here at the bottom, which hopefully you have in your packets, you'll see what's prohibited and not appropriate is rural residential, low-density suburban residential, medium-density suburban residential, low-density mixed use. It's all out of compliance, whereas the character area and the current 2045 comprehensive plan for the county says this area is intended to accommodate recent and anticipated higher-intensity development. While land use such as urban residential are expressly identified as appropriate, rural residential and low-density residential are not appropriate. You will also see that the present site plan shows the amenities, it shows the number of units. You will note that we gave several important revisions to this plan, including we gave the 15-foot right-of-way as requested. We reduced the one-bedroom units down to only 30% of the units as requested by the chair. The resident interest is solely on Foster Drive. Kendra Drive, as I said, has no resident interest. For Foster Drive, we're adding a left-turn lane at the project expense, not Henry County's expense. As you can see, also, there is enhanced landscaping. Ah, heck. Does this? Nope. It just doesn't want to do it for me, does it? Well, I think you saw the enhanced landscaping, which the staff brought forward. There is a video of it, but I can't seem to get it to play. It's a fully gated community with onsite maintenance and management. These cottage units are exactly what we are looking for in this future land use map, and the constitutional notice, as you know, unfortunately, is also put into your packet, which is a lawyer, which everybody hates, has to put into each packet. And so we have to preserve our constitutional rights to equal protection, constitutional rights to due process, our property allowance away from being inversely or otherwise condemned, and have property takings without reasonable and just compensation. And we would also note that around the corner from this are two multifamily units, which are equal-protection comparators, though we don't expect that as a matter because we're doing the opposite of what they're doing. We're doing a beautiful cottage-style home development, which should enhance this area and is exactly what the flume and comprehensive plan requests. With that, we would request approval and appreciate your view of this beautiful project. We reserve the rest of our time for rebuttal. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing. Those wishing to speak in opposition of the request will likewise have 10 minutes collectively to speak.
Connie Snow, 426 Chase Marion Way, and I'm with Conserv Henry. This is a rental development. And as you know, John Ossoff had decided that we are having an issue in Henry County where we have more corporate landlords than we do homeownership. This is going to be in a heavily congested area, a failing school zone. And I also want to point out that the FLUM was decided by developers and other people and against the citizens' wishes. We weren't even given a fair hearing on that. And what about our constitutional rights of citizens? And one more thing, it's quite entertaining to see that we always grant the developers more time in speaking, but I rarely see that happen for the citizens of Henry County. Thank you.
Okay, this ends the public hearing. Commissioner Price, this is in your district.
Yes, sir. I want to thank staff for working with the applicant on this particular development. I think this is a good development. Sometimes when we are dealing with development, sometimes we have a, we look at it through our own lens without considering the lens of others. While there may be certain developments that I may have a preference to, I forgot to always be open that others may have a different preference. When I look at this particular development, it gives an opportunity for those who are just getting out of their parents' house per se, or, you know, perhaps even those who may not necessarily want to sign up for 30-year mortgage. You know, sometimes our outlook of our current day is not the same as it was years ago. And not to diminish any person's preference, but we have to be open to the preference of, you know, our citizens entirely, or entirety. I like this because it gives individuals an opportunity to experience homeownership, you know, without actually being a homeowner or just trying it out. It's beautiful design, and I've, since day one, have been talking about green space, and so this project and development offers this. It also offers the old farm field of Henry County with the crossboard fencing. I think that was an awesome touch, and so I just want to thank you for working with the applicant and for the applicant to work with us and to provide a good product for our citizens. Thank you for the donation of the right-of-way, or the right-of-way so future road expansion and widening can happen. It costs the county money and time to acquire these things, and so I thank you for being a good partner and helping us in our future endeavors. Those are my comments that I have.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? Okay. Wait.
I don't have any comments.
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions. I noticed that we started talking about for future road improvements, we were looking at SPOLOX 7 for Foster. Is there not any way that that could be on T-SPOLOX, or what's the?
I'd have to ask my SPOLOX department to come and speak to that.
Yeah.
So yes, to answer your question. Obviously, T-SPOLOX is going to happen before SPOLOX 7, and so staff is actually in the process of identifying some projects to start scheduling some one-on-one meetings with you all. But this is certainly something that we could consider with SPOLOX, I mean with T-SPOLOX.
Yeah, and the reason I ask is because we just started SPOLOX 6, so you're saying we wouldn't even consider if you do SPOLOX 7, that's six years from now, so seven years from now. And I just hate to think of what the traffic would be like in seven years. I did want to give kudos. I know we recently received a letter from one of the citizens who lives in District 4 commending Next Metro specifically for the way that they responded to some other residents and some of the concerns they had for a neighborhood that they're building off of Patrick. So I did want to commend them for that. Good job with the green space. My only issue, and I'll say it publicly, I love homeownership. So I'm an advocate for homeownership. I love people that have the opportunity for homeownership, really hoping that we can get closer to 80%. I have done some studies and, you know, talked with ARC. You know, Henry County is fourth in the metro area in the amount of homeownership. So I know sometimes people, you know, state that we have a rental problem. No, we're actually one of the most healthy counties in the region as far as homeownership, so we're doing a good job. So I do want to commend Commissioner Price, it is a very good-looking development. So, I do want to commend Commissioner Price, it is a very good-looking development. My only reticence is about it being a rental, but the corporation, the company that's actually building this project, they do get very good marks, so I just want to say kudos to them for that.
Just make sure he's talking to me. So, a couple of things, first, to piggyback on what Commissioner Lewis said, is, yes, homeownership. As far as we know, District 3, definitely a big believer in not having rental units out there. With that being said, kudos to the construction firm not going vertical. That's appreciated, and making sure we've got one-story units that helps reduce those density numbers now, which I think is very big, especially in that area. And it also makes it a safer option when we look from a fire rescue standpoint, is not going vertical. Also, if we're having our density numbers, conversation is, and it needs to be happening there at the interstate, and this property happens to be there at the interstate. So, that's where those higher-density construction projects need to take place. With that being said, there's a comment made, and I just feel like I have to address it, is the future land use map was made by developers. That is not the case. We held our meetings publicly. District 3 participated greatly in those meetings, which is why we have those master plan projects that have come from those conversations with constituents in District 3, which will be addressing Kellytown here very recently, and then North Ola. So, I just want to make sure I address that, so, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. I just want to say that, you know, there is a property not... That's in the city of Hampton, that is a, I guess, home rental...
Yes.
...property. And we went and did a site visit at that particular property. Very well-maintained. And when I asked the management, who was renting from them, they said that 90% of the residents that were renting were airline employees, military, and FAA employees. And a lot of these individuals are brought here temporarily for a year, two, three years. May not want to live in an apartment, but want to live in a home, in a community. And so, we a lot of times forget that we once rented. We hadn't always been homeowners. And so, this millennial group don't want to be homeowners. They don't want a 30-year mortgage. So, you know, to... You know, I think to criticize and chastise people because they rent is a little discouraging. And so, I think that this is a good product, and, you know, it creates another housing opportunity for those that want to live and reside in Henry County. Thank you.
So, with all the comments, I would like to make a motion that we rezone this particular property from RA to RM for multifamily cottage-style apartments.
As presented by staff.
As presented by staff, with all the conditions.
Yes, sir.
Got a motion? Is there a second? Got a motion and a second? No further discussion, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
County Manager, do you have any comments?
No, ma'am, Madam Chair. I'm good. Thank you.
Ms. Bonita, I see that you're here. Are you all here for something? Did I miss something on the agenda for y'all? Okay, alright. I just want to make sure I notice my Board of Election people here. And I just want to make sure that I didn't miss you guys on the agenda.
Madam Chair, I do apologize. We do have a cleanup on Saturday, and I just want to make sure that the District 4 residents know that they have been challenged by District 5 to collect more trash bags than District 5 has collected, so... Right now, you are looking to collect more than 100 bags and 16 tires.
Oh, wow. Okay.
And then District 2 will be the following weekend, so there's a friendly competition. Oh, okay. But I didn't want to, I apologize. I know we run the announcements at the beginning of the meeting, but I just want to make sure if anyone wants to volunteer, there is still time. Go to the county website, our social media pages, scan the QR code, and we'll see you all on Saturday.
Okay, alright. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment, Jassen? Okay, alright. And upcoming meetings and events, August 5th will be our next regular scheduled board meeting. We will also have a special call BLC meeting on the 5th as well. And then our regular schedule, August 19th, 6:30, regular scheduled BLC. With that being said, meeting is adjourned. Thank everyone.